Call the meeting to order, please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could hear you babe. You did good. Ms. Miller, could you please call the roll?
Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albright.
Here.
Mr. Bushnell. Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mrs. Purdy. Mrs. Sebeski.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Torres. Ms. Maddick.
Here.
Dr. McGorick, are there additions and deletions to the agenda?
Yes, there are. We have a personnel addendum and budget transfer added to the consent agenda and appointment of a new school board member to be added to the discussion agenda.
Thank you. So everybody knows, Board Docs is down. The additions to the consent agenda have been printed out for you. Superintendent's announcements and spotlight.
Ms. Rafford.
Ms. Rafford, sorry. Is it not you?
We have with us tonight a very special person who last board meeting was approved to be the new principal of Baldwin Elementary, and that's Laura Goldson. Laura, would you come forward?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Di Maria.
Hi.
Hi. Dr. McGorick, Board, thank you so much for the opportunity that you have laid before me. So this evening before the meeting, I went out to supper. Went over to Foster's, had some wings, and you know, we're walking in and the train rolls in and people are coming off the train and there's families walking because it's just a glorious early summer evening. And the city is alive. The city is in motion and things are happening and I'm getting in my car to come over here and I look and from my vantage point, I can see New Baldwin. I can see the building, I can see the construction, and I was filled with a sense of opportunity because the city is growing and the city is alive. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for charging me with leading New Baldwin and leading Baldwin along with this city into the future. I'm here to say thank you, but more importantly, I'm here to say I'm ready. I'm ready and I'll do you proud. All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Come on down.
Waiting to be told what to do.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McGorick. Good evening, Chairman Di Maria, other members of the Board. Certainly hello to all of you who have come to celebrate with us tonight. I know many of you are here specifically for our superintendent's spotlights. So tonight, we would like to begin with our division-wide art show. The school division recently held its first annual division-wide art show, and tonight we have first, second, and third place winners with us for recognition. So as I call your names from each school, please come forward and make sure you shake the superintendent's hand and the chairman's hand, and we'll get a nice little picture of everybody at the end. First place from Baldwin Elementary, Angel Moreno. First place from Dean Elementary, Zachary Morris. First place from Hayden Elementary, Vanessa Manthe. First place from Round Elementary, Ashley Argueta. First place from Weems Elementary, Karen Roca. First place from Mayfield Intermediate, Dominique Williams. First place from Metz Middle School, Bren Frazier. And first place from Osborne High School, Luke Phan. Second place from Baldwin Elementary, Sharice Backtott. Second place from Dean Elementary, Zoe Moser. Second place from Hayden Elementary, Anaya Timbers. Second place from Round Elementary, Diana Bonilla Nativi. Second place from Weems Elementary, Olivia Stock. Second place from Mayfield Intermediate, Carly Ruffner. Second place from Metz Middle School, Chance Hollingsworth. Second place from Osborne High School, Bridget Santos. Third place from Baldwin Elementary, someone who's already here, Angel Moreno. He got two awards, right? Third place from Dean Elementary, Patrick James. Third place from Hayden Elementary, Marcos Pina Cristanos. Third place from Round, Clark Jones. Third place from Round, Stephanie Garcia. I believe Round had a joint project on theirs. Third place from Round, Tocara Rector. Third place from Weems, Jeremy Hernandez Medina. Third place from Metz Middle School, Christian Ramirez. Third place from Mayfield, Carolina Martinez. Third place from Osborne, Daniel Maran Carrius. And I think we had some that just entered in. If you are here for the art show recognition, if you could come up here and give me your name. Do this have some students coming in? And here we have Zoe Moser from Dean Elementary, second place. Did we miss anyone who was here for the art show recognition? Okay. Well, congratulations to all of you. Thank you so very much and thank you for submitting your artwork for the show. Mr. Lyon will take a picture of all of you right over here in the corner.
Everybody come on over here.
Yep.
All right. One. Everybody look at one, two, three, perfect. One more. One, two, three.
All the parents gotta get their pictures.
You good? Okay. Congratulations. Okay. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. We have a few other recognitions to do tonight, so we'll continue on. Let's see. Oh, yes. We have a Mayfield student who was recognized for a national award for art, Janu Singh. Are you here? Janu Singh? No? Okay. Well, won second place for the With Art I Can Nationwide Art Contest, and the gallery is online, so we'll make sure that we share that on our social media and website, so congratulations to that student. The Gracie Mets Band competed in the Music in the Parks Competition at Busch Gardens in Williamsburg at the end of May. They received a superior rating in first place out of eight bands in the Class 2A category or large school enrollment from around the East Coast. It was noted that they were extremely professional and it was their most complete performance of the year. In fact, based on scores, they beat several high school programs. Mr. Bill Stevens, Director of the Band, is here tonight with three of his students, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Stevens to come forward. And the students that are joining him tonight are eighth grader Maurice Lopez Solis, eighth grader Troy Walker, and seventh grader Maria Seberg. Great. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. One more. So on June 2nd, we held the Manassas City Public Schools Parent and Community Leadership Academy graduation at the Candy Factory in Old Town Manassas. The class of 2016 is our second cohort of this program, which ran from December 2015 through June 2016. Participants spent three hours on a Thursday night, monthly, learning about Manassas City Public Schools and the city of Manassas, gaining more awareness about the schools and the community, which was hopefully preparing them for greater levels of leadership and personal growth. Some of our graduates are here tonight and we would like to recognize them publicly, so as I call your names, would you please come forward? Amanda Castian Jones. Cassandra Watson. Ed Spall. Jack Spall. Greg Weiner. Lynn Pratt. Liz Whitley. Maureen Townsend. Melanie Renner. Missy Magacourt. Tim Conroy. Okay, you know, it's graduation season, we had quite a few that couldn't be here tonight, but certainly I can speak on behalf of Dr. McGorick, I believe, because I helped facilitate this program, and we had a blast. We get to learn so much. We had 24 participants this time that finished the course, and it was a great learning experience for everybody. We got some tremendous feedback, so that we'll be ready for cohort number three and that we can get even bigger and better next year. But it's an exciting time, and as you can see, they've received their certificates already, and they each received a badge, so that as they serve in the community, people will know that they are a graduate of this Leadership Academy, and we hope to see them putting their hands to work on a regular basis inside of our community. So congratulations to all of you, and we certainly look forward to working with you more in the future. Thank you. And as class of 2016 is taking their seats, I do believe we have some graduates from the class of 2015 here. Can you just stand? We can see where you're sitting. Just stand up. Oh, yay! That's great. That was our inaugural group, and they helped us spread the word about how great the program was and helped us do some recruitment, so we appreciate them. We do have one other art student that arrived, and I want to make sure we get his certificate to him. All righty. We have a third place winner from Hayden Elementary, Marcos Pina Cristanos. Make sure you look this way. Two. Marcos, look over here.
One, two, three, perfect.
Good. Thank you. Congratulations. Did we miss any other students? We're good? Okay, great. That's it. Thank you.
Board committee reports. Mr. Williams, anything from academics?
No report, but we do have two items on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Policy, Ms. Sebeski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Policy Committee will be meeting on this coming Tuesday at, actually, a time change from instead of 11:00 a.m., it'll be at 10:30 a.m. in Central Office to start some of the review from the latest update on policies from the Virginia School Board Association.
Thank you. Anything on education support? Mr. Albright?
Yes, sir. Stop armed cameras. This is an action the Board took well over a year ago, but the General Assembly needed to make some changes to the legislation. We had a recommendation, what will be presented next board meeting, the 28th of June, from staff, is a recommendation on proceeding forward that has been vetted with everybody. There's no need to go to the committee. The Board's already approved it. It's just a matter of actually taking the formal ratification of the Board, so.
Thank you, sir. Anything on finance, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Board member comments. I'm gonna go last, but I'm also gonna start. I'm the chairman. I can do those sort of things. The Leadership Academy is a wonderful, wonderful thing, and hopefully it teaches leadership and timeliness. However, we have our first student graduate of the Leadership Academy, and he has arrived. It's Mr. Jack Spall, rising senior this year. He did a wonderful job, and Jack, we appreciate you going through the academy, and hopefully it'll help you help us. Thank you, sir. I had to make a little bit of fun of him. Ms. Maddick, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I have a few things today because it is the last school board meeting I will be attending for a little while, so I just wanted to say that Thursday is the last day of school for students, so that's very exciting. Today was my last day of school since I worked hard all year, so if you work hard, you get exempt from those exams. Do that. And just have a great summer. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kiefer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I wanted to just talk about a couple of things that many of us have been able to attend over the last couple of weeks. One, it was wonderful to see the sum cum laude group at their dinner and all of the accomplishments that these kids both have done and where they're headed to go. It's just amazing, and we're so happy to be a part of those things. As usual, the Manassas Education Foundation had a wonderful night of excellence. It's one of our favorite events throughout the year. There's a lot of work that goes into that, but it's really nice to see the community be recognized, the teachers, students. It's just a real celebration, so to all of those who've put a lot of work into that, we thank you. End-of-year activities are endless. We've had the honor of going to orchestras and bands and all kinds of end-of-year things and awards, so we're grateful for that. It's great to see these kids do so many good things. And lastly, in terms of thank yous to the teachers, to the staff, to the administration, there's been a lot of hard work that went into this year. We wish you a very, very happy summer. We thank you for all of your hard work, day in and day out, no matter what you do for this division. And the last thing I wanted to say thank you for was to Mr. Apt. You know, you probably have a couple of tears tonight, but there was a wonderful retirement party that my train wouldn't let me go to, and so I apologize for that, but I understand. It was beautiful, and it was a tribute to who you are, to what you mean to this division, to what you mean to this community, our kids. We can't thank you enough for who you are, what you've done, and what you will continue to do. We wish you and your family the best. You are awesome, and we love you. Lastly, while I'm on an emotional, tear-jerking thing, this week's been a somber one for our country. I tend to not get up here and make statements like this, but may our thoughts and prayers go to the victims and their families in Orlando. I ask each of us just to think about being kind to others and how important that is. I have to say, yesterday, my spirit was lifted. I was once again able to be at our Osborne High School graduation, and I watched our graduates, the class of 2016. And while I watched every student walk across that stage, it was certainly the highlight of the night, but for me, as you know, we were all sitting here thinking about what this last week really has been like and how terrible it is to think about what some people are going through, what I saw up there was the camaraderie of these kids. I saw happiness. I saw hope. And what that did, it lifted me in a way that I didn't expect. I mean, they always lift us, but it was just something that, in a crazy, senseless world where everything seems to just stop and you're just wondering what's going on, I looked at the kids and I realized I can find solace in my own backyard, and that's Manassas and that's our division. So I want to say I salute our graduates, I salute their families, friends, and loved ones, and I salute everybody who got them to where they are. So as we look forward with hope and with joy for everybody, we're just so happy this year has, and it's on such a bright note for our kids and their families, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Sebeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to congratulate all of our art winners tonight. It was a wonderful event. As Ms. Kiefer said, we've gone through, end of the year, lots of events, lots of events. Seen lots of people, the same people in a lot of places over the last couple of weeks. Excuse me, I have a cold. Over the last two weeks, we've had the wonderful sum cum laude dinner that's put together at Osborne. That's for the students that all have over 4.0 GPA. And to just hear about, we had 41 students in the class of 2016 with higher than a 4.0 GPA. These students have so many wonderful opportunities in front of them. There are many of them going to UVA and Virginia Tech and George Mason. Many have lots of scholarships. One student is going on full scholarship to Yale. Another student is our second in three years to receive the Bill Gates Millennial Scholarship. That's a scholarship where as long as that student chooses to go to school, 100% of all expenses are covered. So it just gives me goosebumps to think about the greatness that's happening in our schools. This class had $2.1 million worth of scholarships, the largest in the history of Osborne High School. And that's a great credit to our students who do the hard work, the teachers that help them achieve their dreams, and their parents that encourage them as well every single day. It takes a community to help students achieve their dreams, and I feel like we're so fortunate in Manassas because we are a community that continuously support each other in good times and in bad. The Education Foundation had the night of excellence with the first-ever division art show. I serve as the school board representative to the Education Foundation, and this is a great event that's planned every year to honor students and community members and businesses that all support Manassas City Public Schools. And this was the first year they did the Division Art Show, and I thought it was just such a great addition to the evening, and to have all the artwork there was really, really exceptional, and it was so nice that those students all got to be recognized here tonight as well. Also, on June 1st, one of the many things that had been put on was a dinner for our retirees. This is a dinner that the Manassas City Public Schools put
Over the last two weeks, we've had the wonderful sum cum laude dinner that's put together at Osborne. That's for the students that all have over a 4.0 GPA. And to just hear about, we had 41 students in the class of 2016 with higher than a 4.0 GPA. These students have so many wonderful opportunities in front of them. There are many of them going to UVA and Virginia Tech and George Mason. Many have lots of scholarships. One student is going on full scholarship to Yale. Another student is our second in three years to receive the Bill Gates Millennial Scholarship. That's a scholarship where, as long as that student chooses to go to school, 100% of all expenses are covered. So it just gives me goosebumps to think about the greatness that's happening in our schools. This class had $2.1 million worth of scholarships, the largest in the history of Osborne High School. And that's a great credit to our students who do the hard work, the teachers that help them achieve their dreams, and their parents that encourage them as well every single day. Takes a community to help students achieve their dreams, and I feel like we're so fortunate in Manassas because we are a community that continuously support each other in good times and in bad. The Education Foundation had the Night of Excellence with the first-ever Division Art Show. I serve as the school board representative to the Education Foundation, and this is a great event that's planned every year to honor students and community members and businesses that all support Manassas City Public Schools. And this was the first year they did the Division Art Show, and I thought it was just such a great addition to the evening, and to have all the artwork there was really, really exceptional, and it was so nice that those students all got to be recognized here tonight as well. Also, on June the 1st, one of the many things that had been put on was a dinner for our retirees. This is a dinner that the Manassas City Public Schools put on for all of the retirees, from people who do custodial work or administrative assistance, all the way up to our assistant principals. It was a great evening, the dinner was wonderful, and it was great to see and hear about the retirees, especially those that were able to come that night. So I think the staff that took the time to put these types of events on, to make sure that our staff understands truly how much they are appreciated, because I don't think that we sometimes can say it enough, the efforts and the work that our staff has to do is so very much appreciated every day to help our students be successful. Unfortunately, because of work, missed two very important events over the last two weeks. One was the Parent Community Leadership graduation. I really appreciate that. A lot of Cohort One is still, is here tonight with us. Cohort Two just graduated. Cohort Three will be next year. It's such a great program. We need leaders in our community, and it's great that Dr. McGorick and the staff have put this program together so that leadership can be made and people can understand the importance that their role can be in our community. So thank you for taking your time to be part of that group. Thank you for your continued efforts to make our community the best place to live and have your children grow up. The other event was really sad for me, and I really apologize, it was rough that I couldn't be there. Once again, my paying job interferes with so many important things. But they do expect me to work sometimes. And thank you for your 30-plus years of service to Manassas City Public Schools. You have dramatically impacted my family as well. The very first year you were principal in the system, I started in Manassas City's Public Schools as my daughter entered Baldwin Elementary. And I jumped right in, parent volunteer, and I really felt like we grew up together. And the last time we had this conversation was when my son left Mayfield, because I thought that we were going to be kind of parting ways and not seeing each other as much, and little do we know that within a few short years, I would be on school board and you'd be at Central Office, and once again, we'd be working together. So I know you will enjoy retirement. I know your family will be glad to have you around more, but do know that the many hours that you've contributed to the success of the school system is noted by many and appreciated by everybody. So thank you, and thank Lisa and Spencer for allowing you to spend the time you have with us, and I know that you're very appreciated. Two other things, Neighborhood Conference. Saturday, they had the Annual Neighborhood Conference. This year, it was at Jenny Dean Elementary School, and schools were a little bit more involved in this event this year. It's a great time for us to get together with people across all of Manassas and work together on neighborhood issues which are common. I just wanted to thank Dr. Jones, I don't know if she's still here. She did welcome everybody as a representative, and Dr. Saunders did do a presentation that afternoon from the school. So it was just a great afternoon, great morning to be together. In case anybody doesn't know, Krispy Kreme is coming. Krispy Kreme is coming. It's gonna be over in the Davis Ford Shopping Center, and they were there and handed out breakfast, and they're looking forward to, as a lot of the businesses, as I go around the city of Manassas, are, are working with Manassas City Public Schools and being an active participant in good community education bond person, so. The last thing I want to touch on is the tragic loss in Orlando. I also want to say that I think that's a very sad time for our country. My deepest sympathy and prayers go out to all the families whose family members were lost in this tragic event, and those who have been in the hospital and trying to be taken care of. It's a senseless event. Our country deserves better. May we all remember that it's important to respect and support each other and our neighbors all the time, because we never know when these things will happen, and that is why we live in America, because we have the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you.
Sitting down there all by yourself.
Sitting next to me, I'm gonna go a few times too long, so please indulge me.
Nothing personal, sir.
Oh, sure, sure. First, I have to tell Ms. Sebeski, I'm glad Krispy Kreme is coming. My wife loves Krispy Kreme. I like Dunkin' Donuts, I don't know why, because I'm from, you know, up east.
Oh, no, hot donuts.
But she would have to, she would tell me that I should say, we have to moderate our donut consumption with exercise, so. Well, let's indulge, please, please exercise as well. I'm gonna start off by saying hi to Mike, and you might wonder who Mike is. Mike is the gentleman who's back in our soundstage, if you could go through that wall, he's back there doing our sound and our TV stuff tonight, so welcome, Mike. It's nice to meet you, and I hope you are here for a number of years. It's nice talking to him tonight. So when you walk by before the meeting, say hi to Mike, he seems like a cool guy. You're the kind of guy. All right. I just came from Jerrani's. The Osborne High School cheerleaders, as faith well now, are having the Spirit Night tonight, so if we get out of here early and we don't talk too much, go over to Jerrani's and support the Osborne High School cheerleaders at Jerrani's tonight for their Spirit Night. Congratulations to all the students who were honored to see me and their families. It's a wonderful accomplishment that you all made, and also to Leadership Academy grads who are here and who were previously graduated on the stage. Thank you for your support. A community is a village. I mean, it's a good analogy, and we all need all the help we can get, and the more we have people who are leaders, the better off we will be. And I'm gonna warn you, I have a bunch of comments, so please bear with me, I'm gonna get some popcorn and settle in. Congratulations to the class of 2016. We are very happy for you and your friends and families, and we look forward to great things from you in the future. I attended the Osborne Spring Sports Awards Assembly a couple of weeks ago, thanks to all of our athletes, including Iris, who's sitting right there on the cross team, and all our coaches who represented Osborne with such grace, class, and dignity in the spring. I went to virtually all the cross games, I know that better than other sports, spring sports, and the young ladies did a great job of playing hard, playing clean, playing fair, and doing what they should be doing and representing us well, so thank you all for that. Round Elementary School, I don't know if Mr. Baldwin is still here, but Round Elementary earned the Virginia Department of Education's 2016 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award, which is a great award. Congratulations on this wonderful achievement to Mr. Baldwin, the Round Staff, I see at least one Round Staff member here, so congratulations to you and the family. That's a great accomplishment. We don't hear these things enough. Oh, I see another one right there. Good job, thank you very much. I see someone else who had a birthday today too, but I won't mention their names, they're in here somewhere. I'll keep going now. My wife and I read to Mr. Coco's fourth-grade class at Hayden a couple of weeks ago. Now, you might wonder why my wife and I read together, because I love her and she's fun, and we spend time together by doing stuff in the schools, so we read to her class and it was great. I think we had more fun than they did. Afterwards, we discussed the school system, we talked about the law, and we talked about medicine, and there was one gentleman there who's name I won't mention, but he insisted he did not wear a helmet. It was cool not to wear a helmet. So my wife proceeds to tell him a couple of stories about patients who didn't wear helmets, and I think he's gonna wear a helmet from now on. So I thank her for coming, but my overarching impression from talking to them was, they were awesome kids. And I'm not just saying that because I'm up here or because I'm getting paid to say that, and Dr. McGorick asked me, because she was no up there to say that. They were really, I mean, these are fourth graders, they were asking questions that you might expect from high schoolers. My wife was impressed, awesome, it's hard to impress her. So thanks, Mr. Coco, to Dr. Wilder and all this staff there, because there are lots of great students who are doing great things, and it's fascinating. If you get a chance to talk to some of our kids, you should do it. I mean, we have lots and lots of great kids doing great things. So thanks to them for indulging us and letting me read to them and, you know, have fun with them as well. I also attended a retirement dinner for MCPS staff at the Candy Factory. Thanks and best wishes to all retirees. You are the bedrock and foundation of our school system, and we're gonna miss you all. To Mr. Apt, I talked with Reverend Tucker this weekend, and I told him that I would publicly convey his hello to you. He wishes you well. My family wishes you well. We've been pretty close, our sons were close. We're gonna miss your diligence, your professionalism, your commitment to excellence, and most importantly, your compassion. You truly cared, and we're gonna miss all of that. And I'm, it's gonna be kinda funny looking over here, not seeing you, but, you know, we know where your heart is, and we know your family needs you, but thank you for all you've done, and we look forward to working with you in the future. We really appreciate you, and I appreciate you personally. Thank you. I also attended a reception, we had so much stuff going on, I think I missed something one night, maybe it was the Night of Excellence, but there was a reception at Osborne for our new choir director, Ms. Angela Easley, and the new band teacher, Mr. Keith Wolfinger. It was great meeting them. The kids who were there were excited, lots of students showed up, so I look forward to their work next year as the school year starts. And I have to acknowledge Ms. Benner, Mr. Gass, Ms. Weaver, Ms. Kozic, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Newman, Mr. Stevens, and Ms. Ruback, and all of the parents who put the reception together. It was a great reception for the kids and something, again, that we do behind the scenes that people don't notice, but I thank them for their work. Thanks also to Ms. Ruback. Last night, center stage sang a graduation. They did a wonderful job, and she jumped in and directed them, and they were fabulous, so thanks to her for doing that. It's not easy to jump in to do music stuff and directing at the last second, but she did a wonderful job, so thanks to her for that. This morning, I had the pleasure of speaking at Met's Career Day, and Ms. Bushra Thompson, who may be here, she invited me. Thank you very much for organizing that. Ms. Wines was my escort for the day. I spoke in tandem with Officer Sabre of the Manassas Police Department, who did a great job engaging the students. They asked a plethora of questions. Those important, well, most interesting questions were two of them I wrote down. One, one child asked, "How many car chases are on Manassas, and does it happen a lot?" And the officer told them, "No, there aren't many car chases in Manassas." He seemed kinda disappointed, but it's critical for our students to understand that our police are here to protect us. We have lots of awesome officers, and it was great to see that interaction, so I thank him for doing that. Another student asked one of our speakers to do the dab, for those who know what it is. Everyone didn't know what it was. Someone up on the stage did do the dab, and I think that the kids liked it, so it was me. And so I'm just taking applause. It was great to engage the kids in that way, but the kids were getting wonderful to engage. Now, these were kids at Met's Middle School, wonderful children, great to engage, great kids, well-behaved, well-behaved, great kids at Met's. So thank you, Ms. Buckhite, for the work you're doing with them and for everything they did today with Career Day. It was awesome. And Ms. Purdy was there as well. I didn't speak with her, because she was speaking another time, but she was there as well, so I want to acknowledge her being there. Finally, I'm gonna conclude with three items, so I'm getting close to the end.
Okay, you're fine.
All right, thanks, thanks, appreciate it.
But we're not eating.
First, since our last meeting, Muhammad Ali died. I was gonna talk about Muhammad Ali and what he meant to people. I know to my dad, who is not prone to look at heroes, Muhammad Ali was a hero of his, they're contemporaries, but I won't go into a lot of soliloquy about him, but I will say he was talented, brilliant, loquacious, and courageous. He inspired people worldwide, even with Parkinson's. A lot was said about him, but one thing that he said that I think encapsulates his personality and really inspires me is his quote about the word "impossible." He said, "Impossible is just a big word thrown around by small men who find it easier to live in the world they've been given than to explore the power they have to change it. Impossible is not a fact, it's an opinion. Impossible is not a declaration, it's a dare. Impossible is potential, as possible is temporary, impossible is nothing." He lived his life like that, and if we can kinda remember that as we move along in our lives, I think it would all serve us well. Second, last night at graduation, we were asked by order of the governor, I believe, to have a moment of silence for the tragedy in Orlando. My heart goes out to the families of the victims, everyone who was in that club that night, everyone who was nearby, the LGBT community, and our nation. It was a horrific, horrific occurrence. But as I've seen on social media a few times, including by some of our own students, which really resonated with me, I'm tired of this. No other developed nation in the world has anywhere near the same rate of violence as America. The US has nearly six times the gun homicide rate as Canada, more than seven times as Sweden, nearly 16 times as Germany, and 25 times Australia, according to UN data. I'm not talking about politics, I'm just talking about people's lives. Can we all not agree that as a society, this level of carnage is not acceptable? It's not acceptable to me, or it shouldn't be acceptable to any of us. It touches our society, our local community, and our students. And we have students who are truly touched by this, not just because it happened in America, because they identify with a lot of the things that people were aiming to destroy with that shooting. So I pray for the victims, but I don't wanna just pray anymore, I wanna do something, because as the Bible says, a Bible quote, "Faith without works is dead." So if we all find this unacceptable, whatever you, way you wanna fight this or address this, please find it in your heart to think about something, because this is ridiculous. It's ridiculous. All right. Finally, on a happier note, I came across a story about a teacher in Colorado a couple of weeks ago that I want to share with you briefly. I'm gonna read to you really quickly. If I can find it, amongst my notes. Brittany Doris, a 25-year-old English teacher at a Colorado high school, was speaking with the mother who came in for a parent-teacher conference. Next to her name was the word "yes" and the word "no," and under the word "yes" was a checkmark. Her mom said, "You have a checkmark next to 'yes' because my daughter has a story she wanted me to tell you. My daughter had deleted her social media accounts, she wrote letters to all those closest to her, and she attempted suicide. Fortunately, the police rushed in and stopped her, and the girl was missing because she was in school at the hospital. Her mom was sitting with the teacher in tears, and the teacher said, "I started crying." Her mom said she had no idea that her child was in such distress. The news was a shock to the teacher, who said, "This student is beautiful, she has friends, she comes to class, she's laughing, she's just a phenomenal, phenomenal human being." So I would never guess that she was struggling. So the teacher wrote a letter to the girl, delivered it to the hospital, and told the girl how much she cared, how much the girl was missed in class, and that they wanted her back. The young lady's reaction was that she was amazed that somebody would say such sweet things, because she didn't think anybody would miss her if she was gone. The teacher said she realized something had to be done, so here's what she did. Over a two-month span, she composed 130 notes that went to all of her students. They were handwritten, so the students knew that each note was authentic and took time to compose. She wrote cards in the airport, during trips, at school, during odd hours, after everyone had left for the day, whenever she could. When the students finished their final exams, she handed out the cards before the bell rang. One student jumped up and held her card in the air, saying she'd keep it forever. Parents emailed, saying their sons and daughters shared the notes with them. As her class left the room, every single one of her students in every class hugged her. She said she hoped her effort was a reminder that everyone, everyone, has the capacity to make a difference, even with one simple note of encouragement. We have teachers and staff who do that all the time, so I thank them for that, and thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, sir. Good luck, Mr. Albrecht.
I'll try to be succinct. A sincere congratulations to all of our award winners this evening, to our retirees, and it was a fantastic retirement dinner, the art show, the Night of Excellence at George Mason. There's just been a ton of things ongoing over the last several weeks. Ms. Sebeski didn't mention at the ESBA Law Conference that she'll be attending. It's just been a busy, jamming couple of weeks. Mr. Apt, I didn't say at any of the celebrations, but you're probably why I'm sitting here tonight. It wasn't, actually, it was a long time ago when you ran a bucket brigade with a leaky roof at an old Baldwin school, and I didn't have children that attended the school, but I watched the angst and the churn and an inability to fix a leaky roof, and it got me engaged in the community. So for everything you've done for our school system for as many, many years, thank you. I think a lot of people know I did not make graduation last night. It's the first one in my 16 years on the board I haven't made. We did have an opportunity, though, to meet with Senator Kane last night. I am also serving on the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors, chairing our legislative issues. We had Senator Kane last night, Senator Warner staffed today. We had representatives from across the Commonwealth, from big cities like Roanoke, Virginia Beach, Charlottesville, Richmond, to more rural areas like Waynesboro, Stanton, Surrey, Gloucester, Matthews, talking about what the children in the Commonwealth of Virginia need, and what the children of our nation need, and what we'd like to see our Senate do, and we talked a lot about the things that matter to us. Flexibility, one size doesn't fit all, local control, a key tenet in the Virginia Constitution, and something we'd like to see more of. Workforce readiness, the current governor's got a huge initiative on that, we tie it to various things, but I've always said it's a moral sin if we graduate children out of the high school to the poverty lines. We've gotta make sure children are ready to be productive members of society. And finally, we asked for the federal government, specifically the Department of Education, to be more engaged with local superintendents like Dr. McGorick, so they can actually ask people who are there doing the job and not just setting policy that makes no sense. We've talked about specific things like ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. Virginia's implementation of that, the draft plan, I think, according to Ann Holton, will be out February or March of next year. We'll see where that goes. It's certainly an improvement over no child left behind. It's certainly an improvement over No Child Left Behind, but the key is it's in the implementation, as with many things, the devil's in the details. We talked a lot about Perkins Act and grants versus funding and where to go. And I specifically in meetings talked about difficult decisions this city had to make relative to career and technical education, because there's just not enough money, and we need to fix how we do our funding for CTE. We talked about nutrition. One of my peers from Surrey talked about they, on an annual basis, figure they throw about $100,000 worth of food away. They have children in poverty going without eating, and they throw that much food away because to meet the federal guidelines, the kids just won't eat it. It's just a real, it's a real problem. And we talked about funding. And one of our peers from Virginia Beach talked about it. IDEA says the government will pay 40% of the cost of various things. In Virginia Beach, they're experiencing a 15% reimbursement rate. Pre-sequestration, I ran the numbers for then Congressman Wolf, and at that time, and I can only imagine the numbers higher, 10 cents of our local tax rate went to paying for IDEA that the government, federal government promised they'd pay for, that they haven't. So, productive meetings, we certainly had a receptive audience, both to the staff of Senator Warner, the Senator Kane himself. Where it'll go from here, who knows, but it was positive. On a more somber note, I echo what my peers have said. There is no place for violence in this nation. There's no place for violence in our schools. And collectively, we all need to figure out what we need to do differently, because something in our nation's not going right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albright, the time you put in behind the scenes, not sitting up here, is invaluable, and we thank you very much. A lot of his days off, he spends in Richmond and now in Washington and in Charlottesville, working for the schools behind the scenes, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Mr. App, I'm done with you. No, don't worry about it. I mean, jeez Louise, you know, come on, the guys retire, and let them go. Yeah, I'm done. No, no more niceness. I was nice to you one night. That's all there is. You're bald. Okay.
What's that make me?
Oh, you know, I wanted to just thank you. Nobody else thanked you. They praised him, you know, and it gets old. Graduation was great last night. The senior walk the other night, thank you for reminding me, was spectacular. I didn't get to see it.
It's on Facebook.
Yeah, it's all over Facebook, it's all over Channel 4, and it was just absolutely wonderful. It gave you goosebumps watching it, and the positive news that Channel 4 put out there was wonderful. It'd be nice if our local press would do the same thing. No, I don't, I didn't see anybody covered it. Maybe I'm wrong, but it was spectacular. And Ms. Benner, thank you very much for doing that. Everybody's touch on Orlando, I, they got no words for it. I mean, just love one another. It'll be a lot easier if everybody would just love one another and stop the hate. And Mr. Williams touched on the sports awards the other night, and I did not get to make it, but I did get a report on my favorite award of the year, the Johnny Foster Award. Some of you, I don't know if any of you knew Johnny Foster. Ms. Schultz, Miller, knew Johnny Foster. Johnny Foster was our biggest fan ever. Johnny was at everything for us. And the winner of our Johnny Foster Award this year was Jimmy Weaver. And those of you that know Jimmy Weaver, he's a class of 78. It was a really weird class.
Hey, hey, hey.
But I'm so glad that Jimmy won it, because he is so deserving of it. And Jimmy is just like Johnny. He's there for everything, and he's there for our kids. So, I know Jimmy Weaver watches all of these board meetings. He doesn't watch any of them. But if you know Jimmy and you see him, congratulate him for me, because I am quite certain he was thrilled winning the Johnny Foster Award, because of who Johnny was.
And he joins an esteemed group of people, such as yourself, who are previous recipients.
Being elected to school board, being elected by you all to be chairman, pales to winning the Johnny Foster Award. Yeah, I wish you all could have known him. He's a wonderful, wonderful man. Am I right?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. She never agrees with me. Okay, citizens' comments. Ms. Miller, did anybody sign up? Did we?
Is there anybody signed up?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Bushra Thompson. And I do not, three minutes hasn't started, so calm down. The, like I said, board docs is not working. You know our rules. You got three minutes. I can't read the whole thing, because I don't have it. But you know the game.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Bushra Thompson. I do not live in the city of Manassas. I work for you. I usually come up with a great concern, and I still have many great concerns. But tonight, I want to thank those school board members who took the time to come out today for our Career Day. It was very enlightening for the students, as well as those people in the community who came out. We had good representation from several of the companies here, from Woodbridge, across different career clusters, and that was wonderful for our students, because, as I talked before, all of our students don't want STEM. All of them don't want to be engineers. Some of them have other aspects, and it was wonderful. So, I want to thank you all. Mrs. Purdy was there, Mr. Sanford Williams, and I got some people who could not come because they had other obligations, but I thank you all very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to just address the board? Oh, good, because we're running out of time. The consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albright, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five to right. And we're done with that. Discussion agenda, appointment of new school board member. I will take that. Since Ms. Purdy resigned, and her resignation goes into effect July 1, we need to appoint a school board member for the remainder of her term. So, the school board will appoint a new school board member to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mrs. Ellen Purdy. The appointee will serve until December 31, 2016. Any residents interested in being considered for appointment to the school board should send letters of interest and a brief resume to the school board clerk no later than the close of business, June 28, 2016. That's two weeks from today. All of your applications should be in, if you're interested in being appointed. The plan is that, I've spoken to all of our board members today, that we will get those in on the 28th, and we will call a special meeting on July 11 to do interviews.
It's the 28th, by 5:00 P.M.?
What did I say? By 5:00 P.M.? It says end of day, and close of business, which is 5:00 P.M. You got till 5:00 P.M. And then on July 11, we will do the interviews and go into closed session to discuss it, and then come out of closed session, and hopefully we will have a vote at that time. If there are so many applications that we can't get it done on July 11, I would like to reserve July 18 as the next date for more interviews. And I believe we've got four board members who will be able to attend both of those dates. Hopefully, we'll be able to get it done on July 11 and complete that. Did I cover everything there?
Yes.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Student achievement and accountability, K-12 grading homework and class rate rank regulations. Mr. Lyon.
Good evening. Chairman DiMaria, Dr. McGorg, members of the board. Tonight, I am excited to be before you to share an informational item called the K-12 grading regulations. I'm not sure. You guys have copies on your computers up there, correct?
Yeah, somewhere. Good luck with that.
All right. So, the, I'd like to go over the development timeline. We took, this was a huge team effort. We started this over a year ago. Dr. Saunders had a committee pulled together, and they stood up a first draft of K-12 grading regulations. That was after the first draft was developed, it was shared with the principals and the teachers for the first round of feedback. We gathered that feedback and revised many pieces of it and took it back out for another round of reviews in October of 2015. Once again, to the principals and teachers. Got that second round of feedback, made a few more changes, and then during, throughout the springtime, Dr. Saunders and myself went out to each school and sat down with teachers during their lunchtime and had them review it one more time and have a chance to speak to us one-on-one about any concerns or changes or pieces that they appreciated going forwards, the grading regulation. Some of the comments during that time I received were, "Gosh, I wish we would have had this when my kids were in school." And another question is, "Why do we need it?" You know, the K-12 grading regulations, the rationale for it is really to bring some credibility, validity, and consistency in how grades are determined throughout a grade level or a subject, so everyone knows the pathway to the grade that they want to earn, and that there's consistency across the board. The grading regulations, as you see them there, the grading scales for K-1 and, should be K-2, I'm sorry, K through 2, and grades 3 through 12, they stayed the same. We didn't change grading scales from how they've been implemented over the years. But one thing that is different in the grading regulation is that there is a standardized formula now to calculate the grade. And we've broken that down into four areas. Major assignments and assessments, quizzes, classwork, and homework. One comment, as we visited with the teachers in the several rounds of feedback, it was clear they wanted some flexibility in determining what percentages each of those categories would be weighted toward the student's final grade. So, we gave them a range, and as a team or department, they will work together and determine exactly what level between those ranges, what weights each category will have for the grade in their subject or grade level. And once that's, and they have to do that before school starts. Once that determination has been made, that grade level team, they will communicate that to the parent at the beginning of the school year, so everyone is informed and on the same page going forward throughout the year. Another piece of the grading regulation that was heavily discussed is a section called reassessing, and it only pertains to unit tests, but allows students to retest on any test they score below 60% on. It gives them a chance to redo and try again. And we had questions about that, you know, how, why are we doing that? What's the purpose? It's about learning. And another part of that discussion, and it took several moments, or several visits to get to this point, is how do you determine a grade on a retest? And that's how we got to the agreement in our regulations, is that we have a scale. If you score a certain range, you have a maximum points allowable for that range. So, we just still reward the student for their effort, given whatever level of performance they achieve on their retest. Another part of that is the homework, well, before I move off that into grades 3 through 12. Another piece of that, too, that came throughout all of those discussions, concerned about how many assess, how many assignments should we have in our gradebook each week? And so, we worked with the teachers to reach a common ground with that, and you'll see that in the grading regulations, that in the expectation of K-12, we do expect at least one, you know, grade entered per week in a, in a, in a subject and a course. The homework regulations are pretty straightforward. I had a lot of good feedback on that, and there's not a whole lot to talk about there, except we did put in there that during breaks, Thanksgiving break, winter breaks, any breaks, that, you know, only, the only assignments during those breaks would be long-term assignments, something that takes a long time for a student to achieve, a research project and so forth. So, a teacher couldn't, you know, there couldn't be assignment made the day right before you go on break. And then coming back off break, homework can be reassigned right away, but that long-term assignment can't be due the day you get back off a break. So, we try to protect that time a little bit, the regulation. And then you have the class rank regulation. It's pretty straightforward. One thing that we discussed with the high school teachers was with the dual enrollment AP, with the points on the scale there. And one thing the teachers agreed with is for the dual enrollment AP courses, if a student achieves a D in those courses, that we give them not just a 1.0, but a 1.4. The reason for that is because our surrounding high schools do that, and we don't want to put our students at a disadvantage in those dual enrollment courses with their peers at other schools just down the road, because the other, the other grade levels in the dual enrollment and AP courses get additional points, too. One thing I did forget to mention is we did put it out for public input from May 12 to June 3 on Let's Talk. Received some really good questions. A lot of the questions I addressed as I've gone along, one question was about the grades K through 12, or K through second grade. Why do we use S's and U's? Why don't we use a numeric grade level with them? And really, the reason is because at that level, a rubric scale is more appropriate, because it's more of a very standards-based approach to learning, and it's more, it's a broader sense of teaching there. Another one is about special education. How do students with disabilities, how do these regulations affect them? And we addressed that. We added some wording in the regulation about students with 504 plans, IP's, that those accommodations and those plans, you know, obviously, are still honored in part of this program, as part of the approach. And they talked about, parents had questions about the homework, and I talked about that, how that homework, the holiday break time is protected, a little bit about that. Another question we received, there's a part in the grading regulation about special provisions. In that, we broke out to K, 4, and then 5 through 12. If a student fails the first half of the year, we give them a chance to still recover the second half of the year. So, the lowest grade they can earn is a 50%. The lowest final grade they could earn is a 50% for that course, not on assignments, but the final grade. So, we did add the special provisions in there for that. And at the high school, if the year-long course, the first half of the year, they, if they fail that course, the lowest final grade they would get is a 50%, but the second half of the year, they will receive whatever grade they earn. Now, if the semester-long course, it'd be the first quarter would be protected to a 50%, and then the second quarter would be whatever they earn. I believe that's it for the grading regulations and homework presentation.
Thank you, sir. Were there any questions, comments? Mr. Williams, one.
Thank you. Mr. Lyon brought us to the academic committee, and we talked in depth about the policy and what they were doing, and thank you for all the time and energy that you and the staff put into this, because it's really important. Kind of an associated comment, yesterday I was in Charlottesville all day at UVA, attending an all-day seminar on college admissions, and there were admissions directors from UVA and from around the area there. And one thing I emphasized was that there were so many talented students that it's very nuanced when you do evaluations, and we look at grades, grades are important. So, the more we can do to normalize what we do and to kind of let people, when they look at our students, know what they're looking at, and help our students the best we can, the better off we all are. So, thank you all for doing that. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Just, why don't you just real quickly synopsize either public input, if there's any of your staff changes, I'm looking at it going, it's really pretty much the same. I'm kind of, I guess I'm surprised or pleased there wasn't a lot of community, was there a lot of community input, or?
Yes, I received, I received eight comments through Let's Talk. I guess that's a lot. But they were good, they were good questions and very in-depth. So, you know, we ran it for almost three weeks up on Let's Talk and sent it out through the app and everything. They were very thoughtful questions, and several, three comments were, you know, ad boy comments. Thank you for, you know, bringing this together and putting it out there.
Because as Mr. Williams said, it's really excellent work. I think the reassessing and your comments you made were really, in particularly poignant that it is about learning. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Lyon, I was quite concerned about our teachers becoming step-to-teachers. I think we've discussed that. And I really like the idea that each department has a scale to where they can, they can figure out what they need in their department, so that it individualizes each department that way, and I thank you for doing that. This, I'm quite satisfied with this, and I really like the way it was done.
Thank you. It was a team effort.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
New business. Student representatives, sixteen, seventeen school year. Ms. Sevesky.
Mr. Chair, it is a pleasure that I like, I get to make this motion today. I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas appoint Iris Alonso and Faith Matic as the student representatives for the 2016-2017 school year effective July 1, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sevesky, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of the City of Manassas appoint Iris Alonso and Faith Matic as the student representatives for the sixteen, seventeen school year effective July 1, 2016. Any discussion?
I just want to congratulate the girls. I'm assuming we're going to do something here in a second, but let everyone know that this process, these students apply for the position, and it's a little bit of a lengthy process. They have to get recommendations and such. Then they go through an interview process with myself, the board chair, and the superintendent, and then they wait a little while, which I understand from Ms. Matic was a little painful this year, waiting, having to wait a while to find out who was selected. We had great applicants this year. We, you know, any of them or all of them were so qualified. It was a really hard decision, and I know people say that sometimes, but it really was a hard decision. I think that we will be very well represented with these young ladies, and I look forward to working with them and continuing to help to build their leadership skills. And I know that they will give us as a board great input and feedback on the needs that we have as a board from our biggest stakeholders, our students, so.
Thank you. I was in on the interviews, and I was a little bit disappointed that in the number of applicants we had, until we started the interviews. And then I was quite glad there was only five or six of them, because it was a major pain trying to figure out which two we were going to pick, because we have such, such great kids over at this high school. And I was very, very pleased with all of the applicants. And Iris and Faith, I have all the faith in the world in you guys. I didn't mean to do that, but as soon as I heard it coming out of my mouth, I figured I better. And I look forward to this next year. Would you like to take a, do we have a camera still?
We have a camera.
Do we want to, everything?
But Mr. Williams has a comment first, so calm down.
The class of 2017, for reasons which most of you know, is very close to my heart, and every night I hear how this is the most talented, the smartest, the best class ever at Osborne Daddy. I hear it all the time. I know these two young ladies very well, and I'm very glad that you'll be serving with us. So thank you all for applying, and hopefully we'll hear some good news in a second.
Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Sevesky. Why don't you go down and do the question with the girl?
Okay.
Faith, go with her.
You have to do the vote afterwards.
I'm sorry?
Oh, you're taking the vote yet, sir.
You did the motion.
Oh, all right. All right. Everybody calm down. You don't have to come back up here. We can hear you. Where am I? The School Board of the City of Manassas appoint Iris Alonso and Faith Matic as the student representatives for the sixteen, seventeen school year effective July 1, 2016. Motion by Ms. Sevesky, second by Mr. Albrecht. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries five zero. Thanks for straightening me out, Mr. Radford.
I totally do.
Yeah, that's, where were you on that one? She's eating bonbons, man.
Should I introduce her up here? I guess everyone on the camera can see. It's a pleasure that I present to you Iris Alonso and Faith Matic, the 2016-2017 School Board Day on.
Iris, how many different hair colors are we going to get? I mean, is it going to be different every week or?
No.
Okay. Every other week or so?
Maybe.
All right. Because I might have to start doing it too. We will look so cool. His will be easier. It's a bit easier to see. I'll just take the leftovers. It won't take much. All right. This is going to be a fun year. You're going to be in so much fun. It's going to be great. Student achievement and accountability, 2017-18 school calendar. I guess Mr. Lyon again.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you.
Good to see you, sir. Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGork, honorable members of the board. This evening, I'm here with an action item. We did present two versions of the 17-18 school year calendar the last time I was here. We did put it out for public comment, and we had a split, a 50-50 split on public input. I think we had 54 responses and 27 liked A and 27 liked B. So I surveyed the principals and got their input on it. And so what we ended up is presenting the one tonight, which, the difference between the two versions previously, this version here has the parent conferences in October as a parent, as a parent holiday, as a student holiday for parents to come in for the parent conference on October 9, 2017. And that was the difference. Everything else remained the same, except with adding that in October, it did extend the school year by one day for the students at the end, and it changed the start date for the teachers at the beginning. So I bring it to you this evening. Before, one thing I would like to go over before we take a vote on it.
Thank you.
If you don't mind. I did have a comment come in, and I keep getting these comments about if we start earlier, why don't we end earlier? And so I just wanted to bring this table back that I presented before. Between August 17 and June 14, there are a fixed number of days that are available to use. And we have teacher work, we have contractual days for the teachers that we, you know, the 13 there, and then we have our holiday breaks. And that's what consumes those days between August 17 and June 14. And so to end any earlier, we would have to make some changes in those holidays or in the contractual days for the teachers. So I just wanted to put that out there so people understand, and I know it's hard to understand, you think you just move one day here and you move it over here, but it's not quite that simple. So I just wanted, I'm sorry, Chairman, I just wanted to go over that real quick. But that was, I have received two comments, one about graduation and one about that through Let's Talk.
Okay. I'm going to ask before we go any further, can you go over the differences again one more time?
Sure.
Now that I've got this pulled up here so that I can understand what we're talking about between the two calendars?
Sure. Let me just pull that up here, too. The two versions I presented last time, the difference, if you look down right here, is in October. Right now, we do two early release days of parent conferences in the fall and in the spring. When we put the versions out for teacher input, you had several comments from teachers asking for the fall parent conference day to be a student holiday so that they could get more parents in.
Right.
The principals felt that was a good idea. So when we had a 50-50 split.
It'll be one day, no early releases.
In October, right?
Right.
Now, in the spring, we still have the early releases for the parent conference days. Now, with that change, what that meant was I took one of the teachers' non-instructional days in August and basically moved it to October. I had to use one of, you know, so initially, in the other version, the teachers would have started in August 11, would have started August 11. But in this version, the teachers start back August 18, because I took that day and used it in October.
Okay.
Now, for the students, I had to add an instructional day, so I had to put that at the end of the year since we didn't want to change any of the holiday breaks or anything else.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Again, y'all did a masterful job in trying to get tons of input. We talked many times about what the best option was, and one thing that came out was we're trying to do what's best for our kids and our families, and we're trying something a little bit different, I think. But I think this is a good option, and I thank everyone for the thought and time that went into it. Sometimes we say, you know, we don't get community input, or teachers don't give input, but we got a lot of input on this. So I thank everyone for their input, and I thank you all for your work.
Sir, could you make the motion? Do you have that thing?
I do.
And you're agreeing with the one that's proposed?
Correct.
Sir.
I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the recommended academic calendar for the 2017-2018 school year as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Ms. Sevesky. Is there any other discussion?
Just to comment. Just to comment, really, because, I mean, I was just talking about the federal government and talking about flexibility and local control, and this is a great example of local control to the extent the Commonwealth and the General Assembly led us with the King's Dominion And I think it's a great example of there is no one right answer. You just said, Mr. Lyon, you said 54 responses, split right down the middle, 27-27. That actually is a pretty significant population, and there is no one right answer. And I think we've got something here that hopefully meets the needs of our community and adapts what we have so that we can enrich the education for children. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sevesky.
Thank you. I just want to say that I think it's always important that we're getting input on the calendar, as we do every year, from both our staff and from our parents, because it, we can't know everything or see everything, so that's always so vitally important. And I think this reflects yet another time that that input has showed to be very effective because changes can be made when we have that information. On another note, thank you for presenting again about how we come up with the days, how many days as to when we get out, when we start. We did get to start earlier, obviously starting prior to Labor Day because of snow or whatever, and compared to Fairfax County, who did not get that. And they're not, they are in school all of next week. So it doesn't seem like we're getting out any earlier, but we really are. And I think that it's the days that were, the students and the teachers are off are, there's a lot of thought that goes into when those are as well and how much they get to have, and are they getting travel time if they're having to visit family out of time? Just so, I want the public to know, this isn't just something that comes before us one time and we just say, oh, yeah, that looks great, Mr. Lyon, go for it. We, there's lots of discussion and lots of thought put into it by everybody to try to make this as thoughtful as we can. I know that, just like when we changed the school start times and the high school really asked to only go to school from 10 to 12 and a half an hour for lunch, they really would like to have more days off and such, but I think it is a very thought-out and well put-together calendar. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank, what Ms. Sevesky said, thank you all for all your work for the academic committee. That's why I went to Mr. Williams first. And like she said, this was not a simple operation. So it sounds simple right now because boom, we're proving it, but it's been ongoing, and thank you very much for your efforts. I have a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the recommended academic calendar for the 2016-2017-2018 school year as presented. Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Ms. Sevesky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you all very much. Can I get a motion for closed session? If I am done, right?
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings as allowed by Section 2.23711. Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purpose. Section 2.23711, Part A, Paragraph 1, discussion of personnel matter for PERS 1516-2674 and two, I'm sorry, 2764 and 2765.
Second.